Call to order this March the 2nd, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Chair, President.
Chair Howard?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
You'll all stand and join us for the Pledge of Legions, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Leonard Chesbro.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for another day of generous Lord creation. We just thank you for many blessings from our God that you've ever given our lives. Lord God, we thank you for the same control of county workers, Lord God, in our sin creating, Lord God, we just pray your blessings upon our families, Lord, and Lord, we just so greatly appreciate everything you do, worship, and love. We all want to change our behavior.
Takes us to correspondence and organizational business. None at this time. No one signed up for public comment. Takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need to prove today are the minutes from the February 2014-2016 Commission meeting, and to approve claim vouchers in the amount of positive $326,633.52, and also to approve the payroll for the pay period from January the 21st, 2016, to February the 20th, 2016, in the amount of $1,089,631.90. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna change the agenda up a little bit, move it around. We have some awards to give out today for time of service, and we're gonna go ahead and move those up to the top before we do the other items. So, well, your names called out. If you just wanna come up and receive the award and stay in a group over here, we'll get a group picture. Start with that. First up, Christopher Pruitt.
Blake Brook, with five years. Hunter Dryden, with five years. Stephanie Hayes, with five years. Matthew Hastings, with five years. Travis Mendel, with five years. Celebrating ten years of service is Mark Falls. Ten years of service, Selvas Delfino-Larios. Ten years of service, Michael Hasty. Ten years of service, Carl Bentley. Ten years of service, Adam Watkins. Ten years of service, Troy Sprinkle. Ten years of service, Jeremy Thompson. And the last ten years of service, Scott Harris. Celebrating fifteen years of service with Franklin County is James Reader. All right, let's try this again. Celebrating fifteen years of service, James Reader. Fifteen years of service, Darrell Macy. Fifteen years of service, Rusty Toll. Fifteen years of service, Justin Watkins. Fifteen years of service, Clarence Riggs, Jr. Uh, celebrating twenty years of service, Darren Rocker. And last but not least, celebrating thirty years of service to Franklin County is Alan Radcliffe.
Okay, I just wanna say, we thank you all for your years of service. We hope you all have a lot more years with the county, and we appreciate everything you do every day that makes Franklin County a better place to live. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take a recess and have a little bit of a reception. Uh, what do we want, ten, fifteen? What do you think?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? If I could get a motion to take a fifteen-minute recess, a move? Motion in a second?
On favor?
On favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order at 8:56. Everyone's welcome to stay and whatever afterwards, it'll still be back there, so.
Yeah, looks like there's enough cake to have.
There is. Help yourself. Okay, we'll go back to the items of business. Uh...
Are we on?
Here's where we're operating now. We'll go back to the items of business. The first item of business is consider approving solicitation of bids for the 2016 painted pavement marking project. Jim?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Maintenance activities primarily chip sealing on the paved roads requires bidding the 2016 painted pavement marking project. Motions requesting permission to solicit bids.
Make a motion to approve, uh, Jim, soliciting bids for the paint project.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Janet?
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Next item of business will be consider awarding the bid for the 2016 chip and seal project. Jim's gonna stay with us.
You approved solicitation of bids on February 10th. Bids were opened by Julie Heck at the clerk's office, myself, 1:00 PM on February 25th. Four bids were received, and the bid tabulation was attached to your agenda. A little bidder using CML as Circle C paving and construction LLC of Garder, Kansas. A little bidder using CMK as Blevins Asphalt Construction of Mount Vernon, Missouri.
What do we know about the Circle C? They're new name to me. Evan?
Yeah, that's my question.
Uh, I contacted two counties, five cities, and District 5 of KDOT. I found one county where they had done a friction course. They did some shoulder work in District 5 of KDOT, and there was one city where they did a couple blocks.
That's my understanding, though, and I did a little research, too, that they're more involved with doing asphalt and not so much in chip and seal. Would that be correct or incorrect?
Uh, I did not find, uh, public entities that they had done a significant amount of chip seal for.
I called them directly and asked them what they, uh, what they had really been involved in. Of course, maybe they were trying to sell me asphalt, I don't know.
One thing I will say is that I, uh, spoke with BuildX, um, 'cause, and they said that they are familiar with Circle C, and the Circle C is, is moving towards doing more chip sealing, that they are fairly new to, uh, doing, uh...
And that's, see, that's the inclination that I got, that they were wanting to get more into that business, but their primary business in the past had been, in load construction, had been designated more asphalt, and that they were moving into trying to getting more chip seal projects.
That is correct.
Were they aware that we wanted to move with us earlier in the summer? Wanted to get it down on the earlier day?
No, that wasn't part of the bid specifications.
Uh, another question is this, is that, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but last year, as we went through this, uh, part of the holdup, uh, in, uh, in it was being able to obtain the HADIC, uh, the, the material. Was there any question of these folks as their availability of the, the CML, the, the HADIC, the lightweight?
Not that I'm aware of.
Obviously, if they have a relationship with the supplier, they're able to get some material. Um, I guess, do you have any concerns as far as being a relatively new vendor? I know chip seal's pretty, pretty straightforward.
I'd rather not be teaching a vendor how to do the work.
And see, that's the, what you just said's kinda... I know it's the lowest bid by...
Sixteen hundred.
By sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, but, and I'm all for saving money, but I'm, I'm certainly interested in having people that are experienced, uh, that we, you know, are assured that they're gonna do the best job possible for us, and I, just my gut feeling is that these people are new getting into the business, and you just stated yourself that we may be teaching them what to do and how to do it, and that, that doesn't sit real comfortably with me.
Well, one of the first questions I was asked was, could they seal coat full with payment? And I asked how long it'd take to do a mile, and they said an hour. And I said, you're not gonna hold up traffic for an hour while you complete an, complete a mile.
That was Circle C?
Yes, sir.
And see, again, and, and I'm all for saving the money, but when we're talking about sixteen hundred dollars and knowing, having a known entity and, and having, uh, I'd say a visual relationship, but they're, they're folks that we know and trust, and we know the quality and level of work that they can do is a...
And they owe us nine miles.
And they, and they owe us nine miles, so they've got to, uh, to provide that while, while they're here. Is it worth sixteen hundred dollars to us to roll the dice, uh...
On a nearly three-quarter million-dollar road project.
Exactly. Uh, I, I, and again, I know it's the lowest bid, but I don't know that it's the lowest responsible bid. Does that make sense?
I think...
I'm, I'm certainly willing to listen to other Commissioners, you know, one way or the other, but I, I just have a concern of going with an unknown entity, uh, over sixteen hundred dollars.
Well, my thought is, we probably don't wanna just jump onto it without some research of some of the projects they've done. I mean, I know we've talked to somebody, but maybe possibly find some where they might have done it, gone and checked on it or something. I, I don't think we wanna just do it without, if we're gonna go that way, possibly tabling it and doing some more research into what they've done.
That is, that is an option, but that does delay things.
It delays it some, but...
It puts us behind, and the whole purpose of this was for us to get this out there so that we could get, try to get to the front of the line, so we're not waiting till late, late, late in the year to get it done.
It's my understanding, City of Ottawa's going to award it to Vance.
I'm sorry?
City of Ottawa's gonna award it to Vance.
So, they're gonna be here in the area anyway?
Frankly, I, I would prefer to go with Vance, uh, from the previous experience, plus the work they're gonna be doing anyway, and, uh, you don't know that it's a, you don't know that you're gonna save sixteen hundred dollars. You may say it on the bid you're saving sixteen hundred, but you still have your, uh, what work is gonna be done, the quality of the work's gonna be done, and the, what is the inconvenience and the whatever else, the performance of it, it's not sixteen hundred dollars.
I, I would agree that Vance is probably better value, given that the, uh...
That's what I...
The, uh, relatively speaking, small difference in price gives us a known, uh, quality and outcome, performance, so, for that reason, I'd make a motion to award it to Vance.
I second that.
It's been motion in a second? Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
And I think, though, we probab, uh, we made the motion to award it, but shouldn't we have not made it specific?
To do anything for Vance Brothers.
Uh, for Vance Brothers, for the CML, the seven hundred and, uh, seven hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents, so that we've specified which bid side we would...
If you're going with CML, yeah. I think we wanna stick with the CML.
I, I believe so, even though, yes, it is more expensive, but I think it's gonna show in the long term that we're gonna get a better value out of it, longer wear.
That was, I thought it was implied, that's what we're talking about, but yes, that was my motion.
I was reading on, too, so it's no misunderstanding.
So, your motion is to award it to Vance Brothers for the CML?
Yep.
For the seventy-three, seven hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight and forty-four cents.
Seven oh five, one ninety-one, eighty-four.
Yep, my bad. Still giving Circle C one.
Do we need to, okay, so...
She's got it.
She got it.
You got it?
I, I was on your implied level.
Okay.
Well, I was also talking about Rose, I was also talking about 2016.
I just wanna make sure, because we wanna make sure that we're transparent and indicating exactly what we're doing and why.
Definitely don't wanna switch back to the other now.
No.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the next item of business, consider compensation increase request from the district coroner and develop a contract reflecting this increase. John?
Commissioners, if you've read my management summary, um, you'll see that the last time that the, uh, compensation for coroner services was discussed and set was approximately fourteen years ago, and that is that we are working with, um, Dr. Ransom on that. My management summary covers, uh, that he is able to select deputy coroners and, and set, also stipulates how much we're paying him right now. The compensation, again, hasn't been, uh, discussed during that time, again, that fourteen years, and so Dr. Ransom came and asked, he has, of course, seen increases in costs for providing those services, and he has asked a, for an increase, um, instead of fourteen hundred a month, moving that to twenty-two hundred a month, um, from sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars to twenty-six thousand, four hundred dollars annually, and that covers callouts, administrative oversight, reporting, documentation for the state, as well as clerical responsibilities required by state laws, and that also, uh, moves to two hundred dollars per callout for his deputy coroners. Does, one thing that I will mention is that those costs are split with the other four counties, so that increase, I believe it's about ninety-six hundred dollars. That increase, um, is pretty nominal, uh, that Franklin County actually, uh, gets hit with, um, that's split between all four counties.
When would the new compensation start or be effective?
Um, as soon as we get the contract, um...
So, this contract is a four-year from 2014 to 2018, or his duties are, but the salary would not start until this time?
Um, looking at the resolution, um, I think it stipulates, uh, what the, the dates are, um, for a period of, of January 2014, and then for a period of four, uh, four years, if you look at the resolution there. So, we would enter into that contract for the remaining time that there is left in this four-year term, and then we would come back and approve that. There has been no contract in the past. Um, in talking with the council, uh, that has been something that, uh, we both feel that probably needs to be in place, besides just the resolution.
The other, the other three counties gonna have to approve this also?
Nope, since we are, according to the state law, we are the ones that, that, uh, set all of this. Uh, the state law allows us to choose the coroner and then set, uh, the compensation accordingly, so we handle all of that.
And then they just deal with what we, the deal that we extract?
Right.
The other judicial districts, is this comparable to what they are?
Looking at, uh, others around us, that it, we're still underneath, underneath them, underneath what other counties around us are doing, the other judicial districts are doing.
I'd say, given probably the often bad hours that he's gonna get called out, and the level of education, and what a family, uh, practice medical doctor makes, uh, with his other duties, and also the importance of having good death investigations, I'd say it's not at all a unreasonable amount to pay somebody.
And also, I, I was kinda surprised when he said, this is what it's been for fourteen years, and I've never had an issue with it, and it's only been in the last couple of years that prices have kinda went up on some things, so... So, specifically what I'm looking for is, uh, if you'll see the, the specific action requested, motion to approve an increase in the compensation for the district coroner and, and the development of a contract for services and authorization for me to execute. That way, he doesn't have to come back to the county commission, uh, to, to execute. We can just go ahead and go forward with the amount of the payment, and then it'd just be a pretty standard, uh, uh, contract for services that the county counselor could develop.
So, with that said, I'd make a motion to approve an increase in comp, in compensation for the district coroner and the development of a contract for services for the district coroner and authorization for the county administrator to execute, execute said documents.
Okay, and it'd be in the amount of twenty-six, four, thousand, four hundred per, annually?
Twenty-two hundred dollars per month, plus two hundred dollars per callout for deputy coroners.
Oh, second.
It's been moved in a second?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Takes us to staff reports. John?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple things, uh, to report on is, number one, uh, the CVV has notified me in writing that they have, excuse me, two resignations from their board. Deb Barker has resigned from their board, and then also Darlene Lester has resigned from their board, and that is, both of them, um, have made their resignations effective immediately. The second thing is, March 16th, uh, we have been working with Bartlett and West and PEC as far as to start master planning the industrial park, and March 16th, uh, they are requesting a joint meeting, um, at about 10 o'clock, I believe it is, um, here, um, at the county Commissioners' chambers, to have a master planning session where we discuss, uh, different aspects of the, um, uh, the industrial, development of the industrial park, and to discuss some specific items that they want input from the, both boards on that. Um, that falls in line with several other things going on that day, is that, uh, we have, of course, March 16th is a Wednesday, so we'll have our regular meeting, um, and then a short break, uh, go to talk to the master planning session with the engineers, and then at the conclusion of that, we would be moving into our, uh, joint luncheon with the school district and the city, um, of the city of Ottawa. So, we tried to plan that so that it would, it wouldn't be different days throughout the week, that we could get all of that done in one shot, so... Thirdly, I've been talking, uh, with Brian Embody, who is the, uh, president of Neosho County Community College, and we are looking, um, he has graciously agreed to, uh, serve as facilitator for a commission planning session. Several of the Commissioners in, in recent months have brought up, uh, a lot of different issues that are of concern, countywide, uh, holistic approach, that, very concerned about several different items, um, and we want to kind of, uh, talk about that. We've talked about doing a facilitated meeting and planning session for the Commissioners to talk about some different issues. Dr. Embody comes at the right price, um, and he's also, uh, somebody that you guys are familiar with, someone that... someone that I think we could have a good conversation with to discuss some things. We are finalizing some possible dates, and I will get that back to you as quickly as possible. We're looking at the, towards the end of this month to see if we can make that work. And as soon as he, we get that, some dates that is works for him, I'll, I'll let the board know. And I'll probably send that to you in an email to let you know in plenty of time. Any questions or concerns, comments on that?
In all of that, I do have a question on the CVB. Have you had contact with them, are they moving forward with their search for a director? Do you know where that's at right now?
I, and Commissioner Renaud might be able to answer this better than I, but my discussions with them has been that, that they are moving forward. They do need to have somebody at the helm keeping things going. And we've also mentioned to them, maybe it, it would be the right thing to do to just have an interim. I did talk at length with them, both Commissioner Renaud and I did talk at length to them about the possibility of, that there's been some concern, or the possibility of the commissioners asking for a request for proposals go out for travel and tourism and convention services within Franklin County. I said that that conversation has been kind of ongoing and discussed a little bit, but it would probably be discussed at more length when they come forward with their funding request, to discuss it then a little more, what the commissioners want to do at that time. So they are aware of that, and that's why they've kind of, they're holding back a little bit, because they want to be a part of that conversation and, and have the opportunity to, to, to work with the commissioners on that.
Well, and, and you know, on that regard, I mean, when we were going through the, the contractual agreement with them and revising that, and it may have gone unnoticed or whatever, but at the end of that, and signing the contract, we had made a statement from the bench, me in particular, that at the end of the contractual agreement, or when it came up time for community partner budget time, that in all likelihood, and not in all likelihood, that we would be going out with a request for a proposal. Because during those contractual negotiations, there, I think several of the commissioners, myself included, had been contacted by other organizations, or individuals, actually, that were in hopes that that had gone out for an RFP at the time, that we were in contractual negotiations at that time. So I think it was made clear, I just don't think that people heard it back then, those several months ago.
Right, and without getting into too much, if, if that is the directive of the board, then that's not, that is something that we'll, we will do. And we'll, again, have that opportunity to discuss that in more detail here in a couple of weeks when we have the community partner funding.
May I comment?
Yes, sir.
Rick, and pardon your answer, Rick, I think Mr. Holmes is correct. The board is looking at possibly hiring an interim, thinking that we will have a difficulty bringing someone to commit to that position, not knowing the status of, you know, how much longer than the contract's for, one-year contract. So it, we are looking at, we have filled the, the director's assistant, or you want to call the, the staff on person, Susan Rager's doing that position and filling that in. We are looking at hiring an interim director. We are also looking at possibly an outside contract with someone to do the website and that type of stuff. We are, we have a, we have, have a proposal for that service, and we are looking at that to maintain that part of the director's, you know, duties that was doing. So I, I think they're, they're moving forward, trying to keep everything afloat. And we have some new board members on that are really engaging and will be a big benefit to the CVB. So we, we had discussed with Mr. Holmes about the, the budget proposal, what we do with that, because obviously without a director, we have to figure out how we're going to, to handle that. So we have some challenges on that board, but at the same time, I think they are, for the most part, trying to move ahead and be as, as effective as they can under the circumstances that they're in right now.
Software demonstrations, the enterprise software, that is a large undertaking that we have begun. I will just speak for myself, we started software demonstrations yesterday, and it was very, very interesting. It's, I don't work with the system, so Janet can probably talk to this, more to this than I can, but it's, it's like going from a, a Studebaker in the fifties.
A dinosaur.
Yeah, excuse me, a dinosaur.
To an Escalade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was, and this covers everything, it covers personnel, it covers the entire, everything that we do as far as, as managing this organization. And we, we're interviewing two vendors, we have everybody at the table that's asking questions, and specifically, all right, does it do this, does it do, you know, all the things that we do on a daily function. And so it's pretty impressive, what we've seen so far.
So, okay, is this software demonstration, is it a packaged demonstration thing that they just show to you? Or is it something that you can get in and you can push the buttons on?
Well, what they had set up was like a, like a test system, and it was like, they had set it all up, and they were, like, it was a demonstration, so it wasn't like a hands-on, we do it. He was up there, though, he had the computer, it was all set up, it was running a fictitious county, and he was showing us, you know, what all it would do, and using things similar to what we would do, like, who did we buy rubber boots from last time? And like, he would, you know, show us how you could look that up. I mean, like, Debbie puts all of this information in the system right now when we purchase things, but we have no way to reach into our system and grab that and pull it back out. But with this, there were so many ways to reach in and pull out, you know, by vendor, by vendor number, by, by what we bought from them, by how much we've spent with them, you know, to.
It's database.
Just, yeah, and it, it was, it was amazing.
Of course, anything that we would get would be better than what we have now. What I would just always caution us on is, because I've dealt with vendors for, and they have put together specific demonstration modules, if you will. And that is, it's showing you theoretically what their systems can do and everything, but it is different once you download the system and you have it on your, on your platform and, and running.
They very much let us ask questions about the way we do business, about the way we're used to doing things. And they really were thinking through with us how their software could work for us, and how, how they could meet our needs. And they were, I mean, they, and there were definitely things that we brought up that they hadn't thought about in that way, because we would be their first Kansas county if we went with the one that we saw yesterday. We were, are not by far their first rodeo, though, because they have over thirteen thousand governmental entities on their software, being cities and other counties, Henry County, Missouri, which is Clinton, Missouri, they're on the, the full package. And they actually have Crawford County is on their financial management portion. And then Johnson County will be going live with tax this year, so.
And the city of Ottawa is already using their system for their, their accounts receivable, accounts payable.
And also, the appraisers' office is mandated by the state to use Orion, which is a Tyler product. And they showed us the personal property side of that, which absolutely mirrors what we're already doing with real estate. So it would be a minimal transition to get two more people from the appraisers' office onto the exact software, you know, all using the same platform. There are still some questions that I'm working with them on, that I think Johnson County's probably going to have to answer those questions, how we move from Orion, the, the appraisers' office, kind of setting the values on everything, to, through to tax statement, which is, you know, where Debbie and I get involved in how that comes in on the financial management side. And I think Johnson County's really going to be able to help us with that as we go forward and look through this in the next, you know, couple of months. So I, I have been in talks with John Bartelak from Johnson County already. He's invited me up to show me what they're doing with Tyler, with their software for tax. And that is something I definitely plan on doing. And he also is over the register of deeds portion also. So I think that might be an opportunity for Sue, probably, to come up and see what they're doing also. She'll be getting her demonstration portion of Tyler on Thursday.
Because Sue had indicated that she was interested in, as I recall, something different.
She, she was, but she is very into this process, she really wants to see what there is to offer. Tyler has a piece that's specifically for register of deeds, it's called Eagle Reporting, and she's going to see that on Thursday, and she's very anxious to see that. So I, I think we were all very invested in it, it was, you know, it was people from my office, the treasurer's office, planning and building office was there, John, HR, I mean, there were quite, Phillip's office was there, quite a number of us there, all very interested. And, and even when it wasn't your turn to specifically be seeing what would affect your office, a lot of very valuable questions came up, and we were able to talk to them about how we could make their software work for what we needed. So there's, there's lots of good things about it.
So to make it work for what we need, reminds me like when the state, the motor vehicle registration, about the purchase of software, and the buyer just drove it from state to state. And found out there's a lot of reasons it doesn't work for us, and it had to be manipulated, made to work for us. Since we're the first, would be potentially the first county in Kansas for them, is like, those statutory things come up, would we be responsible to pay to kind of manipulate that software to make work for us, because we are the first, or?
That's a question for Dustin, but it's my understanding, because Johnson County is already on tax, and then they're already aware of this, and that that's supposed to be part of the services they offer as our annual fee going forward, is my understanding. So, and when I say like, how we make it work, is just like, the tools are already there, just everybody kind of utilizes them a little bit different. Like, one thing we asked them yesterday was, when we enter receipts in, like, you know, like Dee in Planning and Building said, you know, that they accept money from, like, surveyors, and they may get the same surveyor coming in, you know, two or three times a week, or he may come in once a month, or whatever, but she doesn't want to have to enter his address in every single time she puts a receipt in for him. So they said, oh, yeah, well, we can, you know, set up this table of customers for you, it's already there. Just nobody that they knew was using it that way, but they said, you know, we just attached this table of content, of contacts to it, and so, I mean, it's just taking what they have and finding out how it works for us.
And I will say that this is, this is the first one. We have a second one in a couple of weeks that we're also evaluating too. So it's, it's like any big project, it's, it's all the planning on, on the outset, and it's asking a lot of questions, and, and that sort of thing, it's those things that, but yeah, that's my worst nightmare too, is that we go live. But it's, it's one of those things, that something like this, we run parallel systems, we're probably anywhere from three to six months to make sure that we're working out the bugs before we go.
And Johnson County's been doing that, you know, and like I said, them going live on tax this year, not just with their appraisers' office, but carrying it over to the clerk's office, and then on into tax statement. You know, I think they're already working through a lot of those things, and John, John Bartelak said they've overcome a lot of different things, so it is nice to have them kind of forging the road for us.
What's, what's out there about hack attacks, you hear about those going on now with big organizations? Does, does this come up in the conversation?
A lot of that, there's backups, there's dual backups between them on a remote location for them, but also for us. We also will have, have backups, and, and I've been talking with Dustin, all right, what will we need to do on our end to be able to prepare for this? There might be some storage capabilities that we need to expand on, but that's minimal. And so there'll be dual backups, somewhere with their organization online, and then somewhere with us. And so when we have repetitive backup systems like that, that adds quite a bit of security to us. So, any other questions on that? Like I said, we're right now in, in the process of just moving forward on that. And it's, it's kind of exciting, because it, I think it's going to make a huge change for our workflow and other things. So the FC, FCDC executive director, they are moving forward. The FCDC board, executive board is moving forward with a final candidate. He is going to be in town on March the seventh, a meeting with the executive board at that time. And then the board would be interested in this, is that there is a small social gathering for FCDC members to come down at Lloyd Builders at five o'clock on that day to meet the potential candidate, have some discussions, if they, if the board or any of the FCDC folks would like to, to meet and discuss things with him a little more. And so just, you might want to mark that on your calendars. The last thing I would say, have today is employee appreciation, that is Friday. We plan on taking out snacks, much like we did last year on Friday morning. So if I could get a, any volunteers, one or two volunteers from the board to assist us with that on Friday morning.
What time do you want to start?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, I'm in.
Okay. Anybody else, if you just want to show up, that's, that's fine too, that's always helpful. So that is all I have.
Good, Derek, Sheriff.
Good morning, I know you guys have already talked about the enterprise software, but just what was not mentioned is that the company that was here yesterday doing their demonstration, that is the company that we just went with on our new software. So there would be some pretty good interoperability there. Administrator and I had discussed the fact that, because we do receive money in as well, so we kind of are going to have that accounts payable, accounts receivable stuff in our software that kind of give us a pretty good idea as to how some of that stuff may work. So for what that's worth to you, that's who we went with, was Tyler. Today, we have a couple of our candidates for our hiring process for deputy that will be going through polygraph exams. We've started them on their background checks, and the polygraphs are going to be on that today. So we're proceeding along pretty nicely with, with that, with that process, and we hope to have that completed before the, before the end of the month. We hope to have somebody hired and, and in place. With the jail project, that, where we are on that is that we're receiving, the equipment is being sent in, or the, all the supplies and everything are here. The company that does this wants everything in place before they start, because they don't want to bring their people in from across the country, and then have to sit and, and wait for something. So as soon as they get everything in, and I don't know if they've, if Mr. Holmes has an update as far as that, but I know we've been receiving some of, some of those products in already, so that's kind of where we are. And then the last thing I have, I need to update you, well, I guess I have two things. We did receive, we have received four of our vehicles already, we've taken, we've taken possession of four of our replacement vehicles, and those are being transitioned through to get all the equipment and everything done. We still have one that's out there, last I checked on it, it's still sitting in Chicago, but the, but we, we have taken delivery of four of those, so we're getting that process going. I've mentioned before that when somebody is incarcerated, if they are on private insurance, their private insurance typically will still pay for their medical expenses, but if they are on Medicaid or Medicare, or don't have insurance, that's on the county for any medical issues that are in the jail. We've had a few things lately that have been very expensive, as far as with some inmates, a couple are things that have happened while they've been in the jail, medical wise. And so others were some ongoing issues that we're gonna, that we still have to take care of. And again, Medicaid and Medicare stops once they're incarcerated. I bring that up to tell you that our line item that pays for that is the same line item that we budget to pay for, because we have a con. item that we budget to pay for, because we have a contract with Advanced Correctional Healthcare to provide all of our medical services, and we budget that at a, a little over what that cost us, about $90,000 a year is what we budget, because if we have somebody farmed out, or if there's something that's above and beyond what would be expected, we wanted to have money in there for that. We can't plan for these more, what I would consider catastrophic, I don't know if that's the right term for it technically, but we've got some expenses that, that are going to be coming down out of, out of that. I've been working with the administrator to kind of let him know, hey, these are the things that we're dealing with, we don't have a choice by statute, this way it is. And so I just wanted you guys to know, because there's going to be some larger expenses there. If you want more specifics, I'm happy to do that, not in a public meeting, but if you want an executive session, or if you just want to come meet with me, I'm happy to talk to any of you about it, to give you more specific details. Like I said, the administrator and I have been talking about what we do on our level to, to get this addressed, to make sure that it's all covered, and the county council has received some information as far as from one of our state legislators on some options that we may have available to us, and I'm continuing to meet with our lobbyists and our legislators to see what we can do to get some sort of fix in place, so that counties aren't on the hook for all this, because it's, medical things can get very expensive, but they're also very difficult for us to budget, because we, you just don't really know.
Now, unless the, unless the legislative process changes, where it cuts, instead of cutting off Medicaid or Medicare for those folks, there, I see an opening, and I think it actually exists already in some other parts of our country, where there are specific insurance policies for, like prisons and jails, so that you wind up getting a medical healthcare policy for the correctional institution, and then it's just like your own personal health insurance. So I, I think that already exists, and maybe something that we wind up having to look at if the statutes aren't changed.
And that's what I've been talking to, it's Ed Klump, he's the, he's the lobby, he does all the lobbying for the Kansas Sheriff's Association and Association of Chiefs of Police, and that's kind of what we're looking at, is to see if maybe there's a possibility for us to do that in Kansas. By statute, we only have to pay the Medicaid rate on, for, for anything that is done. We want to make sure that that stays in there, so that helps keep that.
But we still have to pay it.
But we still have to pay it, but we're trying to see if we can't get somebody to, I mentioned to them, talking to K Camp, to see if they would even be interested in something like that. So I know that those things are in the work, but in the meantime, that's where we are. The state legislature's telling us that most of those things have to be changed at the federal level, and so.
I think that's passing the buck, because it exists in other states currently.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Sheriff.
Jim, anything else? Janet?
Just wanted to let you guys know that we got the Pomona ballots programmed, and we're going to be getting those printed and get ready for the Pomona election next month. Also wanted to remind you guys that the caucuses are this weekend, and although those aren't led by my office, they are, there is one, the Republican caucus is being hosted in Franklin County at Washburn Towers, the Democratic caucus will be hosted in Lynn County at Jayhawk Elementary School. So we're fielding a lot of questions about that, even though we're not in charge of it, but just wanted to remind you guys about that.
With that, we'll go to Commissioner, comments and board reports. Roy?
Don't have any reports, but there is a first Friday forum, Friday at 10 o'clock, and I think we have our legislators on Saturday morning, at City Hall, 10 o'clock.
The Friday forum, I believe, is about work, healthcare in the workplace, or something like that. I, I haven't been to any meetings, board meetings, but I do need to bring to our attention, which I'm sure the administrator's already on top of this, but on the tax lift bill, the Senate Committee hearings will, Senate Bill 316 will be occurring on the 8th and 9th, and then for the House bill, 2609 will be occurring on the 9th and 10th. If you haven't read through those, I mean, I think every citizen should, and certainly every elected official, but there are vast differences between the Senate bill and the House bill. The Senate bill, for the effective date, of course, wants to move that forward, the House bill wants to keep it as it, as it currently is. Also, the measurement by, on the inflation, where under the Senate bill, they just want to connect it to the Consumer Price Index, where the House bill wants to take an average of three different indexes, which is called the municipal cost index. Also, the things that would trigger an election are different between both bills, and then the exemptions that are involved. The Senate bill is wanting to eliminate exemptions, where the House bill's actually wanting to add some for us. Also, the, the, let's see, it's the Chief Financial Officer of the Department of Administration has put together a spreadsheet that's out there on the KAC website, that if Senate Bill 316 went into effect, you can key things into it, and it shows you what would trigger, how it would trigger an election. Also out there on that website, they have, and this is the part that I think I want, we want some help from the administrator, there are actually some letters out there, a letter, and it's a form letter, but I think, I believe that we should have some semi-personalized for each of our commissioners. I'd want one anyway, I leave the other commissioners up to them, but that have one of those, have those composed on the behalf of the county as a whole, in my opinion, and then each of us as a commissioner. And I'd be happy to put my signature, certainly to mine, and that then send it to the list of the committee members, and certainly to our own specific legislators. KAC and the League of Municipalities are tapping certain folks for testimony during those committee hearings, but I, they are also asking for that letter barrage campaign, and I think it's our responsibility, I feel responsible, that we should be, even though we're not going to be going there to give testimony, I'm going to do my best to try to be there during the hearings and sit and listen to what's going on, but I think we should do our part as elected officials and as administrators at all levels to send forth the letters to those legislators, certainly the committee members and to our direct representatives, to let them know where we stand on that. But that's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Harris, I did get that sample and the legislative update on that, and that was, I got that later yesterday afternoon, and that was something that I was looking at, and that was kind of my idea too, is to draft letters and then have, have all of you take a look at them, and if you agree with them, sign off on them, and we'll send them as well as from myself about the concerns that we have over the tax lift.
Well, I certainly will speak for my fellow commissioners, I think they should look at it and make their own determination, but I certainly, I think there should be one from the county overall, it's in our best interest, and I, as elected official, as commissioner, I want, want several of them to go, you know, I'm afraid to sign my name numerous times for the specific committee members, and for my, our specific elected officials within our region.
Okay. I've not been to any meetings since our last one, or whatever.
Roy?
I attended yesterday morning the FCDC Executive Board meeting, also with John, and he pretty much covered the main topics of that, of the candidate being in on March the 7th. And last night, I attended the LOH Fire Department Board meeting, and it was the first one of these I've been to. My plans are to go to all of them in the county and just see what's, what's going on there. Most of, everything in there last night, nothing out of the ordinary, pretty much I think what all fire departments are facing right now, making sure their equipment's up and their trucks are ready, and waiting for the next grass fire to break out somewhere, so, you know, nothing uncommon, other than discussing equipment and moving some trucks around, making sure their equipment's ready. And that's pretty much all I have right now. Okay, anyone else have anything?
Has there been a date set yet for that district thing that we're going to host a meeting?
14th.
14th.
14th of April.
Okay.
Southeast Kansas, elected officials conference.
Okay, with that, look for a motion to adjourn. Have motions, a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourned?